Madera, regular meeting of the City of Madera City Council. Today is Wednesday, July 7th, 2021. It is now 6:00 P. M. I hereby call the regular meeting of the City Council at 6:00 P. M. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's executive order, which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act. The City Council meeting will be live streamed on the city website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may participate in the meeting remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing Enter ID 914-3023-2621. Hashtag followed by star nine on your phone to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Jerr, California, 93637. Alicia, would you please call and roll?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
I'm here.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Montes?
Here.
And Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Rabbi Paul Gordon?
Good evening, everyone. We ask Creator's blessings as each and every one of us experiences these challenging times. And you may notice this small colorful kippah on my head. It's from Buchara. It's from a part of Asia showing the diversity of the world around us. And so many of us take for granted so many times that everything should be the way we always think it should. And in this day and time and place, we have a lesson to learn, which is even when we think we know what something should look like, it might look a little different. And that's the compassion that we need to have to be able to do these things as public servants, to be aware and have our hearts, minds, and bodies willing to serve Creator in the sense of being willing to accept all of us who are a little different, whoever they are and whatever they may be. We come from a very diverse area and a very diverse region. And the City of Madera is blessed to have so many different groups, ethnicities, nationalities. And I ask Creator to please watch over them all as He gives you the wisdom to help guide the city to the necessary business and the strength that will help in the greatest fortitude of guiding the city to the best possible result through these challenging times. In Creator's name we pray, amen.
Thank you, amen. Would you please continue standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Nicole Say?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
I believe we have a late distribution announcement, Alicia.
You, Mayor, thank you. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495.7.5, members of the public are advised that less than 72 hours prior to this evening's meeting, Item D2 was distributed to the council and posted on the city's website after the agenda packet was posted. Members of the public wishing to view or obtain a copy of this item may do so by visiting the City of Madera meeting and agenda page located on the city's website or by contacting the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I will ask my colleagues if you have any changes or modification to the agenda. I see none. I will now ask for a motion from my colleagues.
Move to approve the agenda as presented, Mayor.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilmember Gallegos. Alicia, would you call and roll?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas? And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with the final vote of 5-0. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now move on to public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold a comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the meeting hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. And no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to the public comment at this time. Having said that, Alicia, do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. We have some that we we have public comments that we receive via email.
Okay.
Now go ahead and read the first one by from Marilyn Delasia. I'm writing to see if you guys can change the square footage requirements for vertical integration applicants from 20,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. In California cannabis law requirements, there are different options. There is a license that is given out called License Type 2A, which is small indoor growers permit, which is square feet requirement would be between 5,001 square feet to 10,000 square feet. If businesses aiming for micro licenses, vertical integration, changing the requirements would make sense. It would facilitate finding a building for any applicants. Also, again, a reminder to allow for more equity licenses being given out to the community from two to four. Second one is from George Delasia. Good evening, Mayor and council and fellow. My name is George Delasia. I am born and raised Maderan and a local Central Valley business owner affiliated with Mainstream Medicinal Club. I would like to bring to the forefront the urge to reconsider the square footage requirement for vertical integration applicants to 10,000 square feet from the proposed 20,000 square feet. This gives better opportunities to the local community to realistically obtain these kinds of options. This would open the possibilities to compete with the marketplace and secure the local property in the range. Also, I would like to bring awareness to the need for an increase of two more equity licenses. Please kindly consider allowing the split down the middle at four standard licenses and four equity. This is much preferred from a local opportunity standpoint or the possibility of adding two more to the initial proposal, bringing it to four equity and six standards. Dear Mayor and council members and community office and leaders, my name is Rico Saldivar, partner of the prospective new cannabis club named Mainstream Medicinal Club. I understand my comment is off topic, but I'm feeling concerned and the need for me to voice my opinion regarding the topics of equity licenses and the possibility of square footage at reduction for the microbusiness license or vertical integration license. For small business owners like myself and my partners who will be applying for a license, it is a high concern to us that the limited amount for equity licenses isn't much of an equal fair amount compared to the six that the bigger established corporations will have a chance to obtain. We once again ask you to please add two more equity licenses, whether they're added on the top of the current eight or simply divided the current eight, so that either way so that either way they will be produce a total of four equity licenses, giving us small business owners an even fair chance to acquire a cannabis retail license and business. In regards to the vertical integration license building minimum square footage requirement of 20,000 square feet, we are asking council to please edit that number down to 10,000 square feet. Our main reason for this request is due to the lack of warehouses available that are within the size requirement. Most of the buildings me and my team have found are double of that size request or more, which is impractical or reasonable for us at this time. Our team feels confident that an edit down to 10,000 square feet gives us realistic options to locate and secure an adequate building to open a full vertically integrated cannabis corporation. Mainstream Medicinal Club in Madera will become a pillar of the community if given this great opportunity. Thank you for, thank you all for giving me time to be heard. Dear City Council, my name is Roman Gonzalez. On behalf of my family and father Jess Gonzalez, my father, who is a Vietnam veteran and local business owner. In order for us to compete with the big companies moving into the City of Madera, we would ask for your votes to pass four equity licenses and less square footage from 20,000 minimal to 10,000. Please consider these requests as we local Madera folks would like to, would like for your votes on these two topics. Thank you for your time. Dear council, my name is Kirk Otamian, and I was born and raised in Madera where I had a small business for 25 years. I now do commercial real estate and want you, the council, to see what I have seen with the dispensary. First foremost, I have seen these large non-local companies ask local people to be a part of their company so they qualify as local owners. I think to be considered local ownership, the local person should own 51% and live in Madera at least two years. Companies are meeting with local council members and making a lot of promises of what they can do to help the city. I suggest they put it in writing, and if they get approved and must follow through with it or lose their licenses. Landlords are charging two to three times the normal rent just because it's a dispensary. Local people are being priced out. Council should put in a fair market rate clause. I feel it should be for real local ownerships and for others. Last, I tell you a quick story. Verizon came to town 20 years ago, and on their grand opening, they donated 1,500 and not a dime cents. Local companies like The Bridge Store donated every month for over 50 years. Local businesses, local business is what supports the town. Local owners will keep money in Madera. Thank you for your time, Kirk Otamian. Honorable Mayor, City Council members and city manager, I would like to thank you all for your continued effort and hard work. Madera is making some amazing strides forward, and that is due to what all of you have been putting in. However, there are still some deeply concerning points that need to be addressed regarding the cannabis program. I'm concerned about how the cannabis licenses will be awarded and who licenses will be awarded to. Is this venture strictly for millionaires? Will there be a focus on the awarding majority of the licenses to Madera residents and local business owners? Or will we be giving these licenses licenses to the corporations from the Bay Area and SoCal? It seems like Maderans are being squeezed out of the process before it even starts. In the cultivation aspect, it is my understanding that there are 20,000 square, there is a 20,000 square foot requirement. Many experienced growers from Madera will not be able to afford rent on such large buildings. Lowering the minimum for building size will add more equity to the licensing process and will still allow larger companies to come in to occupy larger buildings as long as there is no cap on the number of cultivation licenses. It's a win-win for all parties. In terms of the retail side of cannabis, there needs to be a heavy discussion on what direction our city is taking. Is there going to be real equity in the licensing process? Or are we just going to reward millionaires and corporations for simply being millionaires and corporations? Are we going to have cookie cutter dispensaries, which will be the same as every other town? Or will we let Maderans bring in their uniqueness and spirit into our shops? Are we going to continue Madera's goal of social equity and have some type of focus on people of color minorities and women entering the cannabis industry? Or will we just look at who has the biggest name and the biggest bank account? Local startups and startups owned by the people of color from Madera should be afforded the opportunity to acquire a license. This will ensure that larger number of licenses are owned locally, which ensures that revenue and profit will stay in Madera instead of being funneled out to other counties, states, and even countries. In terms of licensing, Madera has a chance to become the new standard to which other cities and counties can look up to and model their systems after. The cannabis business is notoriously nearly impossible for regular people to get into, and even more so for people of color. There is a lack of equity and equality, and there is a major lack of diversity. People of color and people who come from not so wealthy backgrounds have run into a wall when it comes to the cannabis industry. As our elected officials, you have been chosen to lead Maderan to a brighter future, and this is a chance to put that opportunity and strength in the hands of Maderans. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening to my concerns. Respectfully, Akram Kassim. And that concludes the public comment that I've received, Mayor.
Thank you very much for that, Alicia. We have no written communications. We have no presentations. We have no introductions. We have under Item A, a workshop, a one request for direction on possible changes to the City of Madera typical street cross-sections. I believe Mr. Helmuth, he would have this item?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you, and thank you, council members. I'll go ahead and share. I believe we got it?
Yep.
Okay. Anyway, this, this particular item was on a previous council meeting. I was asked to go ahead and provide a staff report, which, which made complete sense. The staff report hopefully is providing additional detail with regard to the proposals of the conceptual street cross-sections. This presentation will set, will be mostly the same. I will throw in a few additional items or explanations, but it will be substantially the same as the, as the previous presentation. So the purpose of this item was to seek direction and or confirmation on previous council direction with regard to the transportation section assumptions that are contained within Development Impact Fee Program update. Those include the conceptual street cross-sections, the primary focus of this report. I will also again touch on overhead utilities, not so much on other parts of the transportation section, which is multiple bridges or inclusion of multiple street segments. The background with regard to this is it did visit the June 2015 council meeting. No member of this current council was on that council, which indicates that makes sense to bring this back in front of this particular council. And conceptual changes were significant at the time. Why were the current changes or why were the changes proposed? The, the stair drawings that we have currently have been in place since April 2005. Those were essentially a copy from another city. I understood that they came from the city of Fresno at the time. They are utilitarian in nature, and they, they likely do fall, the current stairs likely do fall short of the vision and general plan goals. What are some of the vision and general plan objectives and goals? Have a walkable and bikeable city, be transit oriented aesthetically, have aesthetically pleasing city, well, aesthetically pleasing streets and maintain existing future vehicle capacity. Taken together, the approved changes result in a complete street or pretty close to it. A complete street, according to the National Complete Streets Coalition, states that complete streets are designed and operated to enable safe access for all users. That includes pedestrians, bicycles, motorists, motorists, bus riders of all ages and abilities are able to safely move along and across a complete street. What do these standards include? They include dedicated bike lanes. We don't currently have that. They have improved pedestrian amenities, a wider sidewalk, five to six feet, wider arterial island. That's intended primarily to provide a larger pedestrian refuge. It was mirrored after Caltrans. For a while, they were pushing the 16 feet, and I'm not so sure that they're necessarily doing that now. And then a wider collector median instead of the current 12-foot, 14 feet was proposed. Aesthetics, wider park strips. The collectors were shown to go from 15, excuse me, from 10 feet to 15 feet, and the arterials from 10 feet to 20 feet. And it also was assumed that there would be a meandering sidewalk. This is the collector standard shown at 160. It goes from 80 feet to 160. It increases the landscape areas by 10, 10 total feet, five from each side, two additional feet of sidewalk, one from each side again, and two-foot larger turn lane, and then the 10-foot bike lanes. It does not include the gutter in that number. Bike lanes I deal with for bike lanes are five feet plus the gutter. That's what we're proposing. There is a minimal standard associated with that. That can be four feet as well. This is a kind of an artist conception of the collector street. The arterial street that showed an additional 19 total feet of landscaping on, on, for both sides, two additional feet of sidewalk, the one foot of median, and it actually only shows about a one-foot bike lane increase. And that's because the existing arterial standard already has a, has an outside pavement width that doesn't really have a purpose these days. At one time, the wider width would have been, would have worked with, with parking lanes. However, at least, at least 15 years ago, it was determined that the bike, excuse me, parking lanes should not be provided on arterials. It's, it's a, it comes down to a site distance concern, pulling out driveways and having cars blocking vehicles as they pull out. Again, artist conception. And then a six-lane arterial is essentially adding two more 12-foot travel lanes. Again, artist. Is there anything missing from this? There are future considerations. As, as, as time passes, the city should consider turnouts for buses. The pedestrian refuge itself, we would want to go ahead and provide a detail for how that works and wheelchair ramps. The current standards, old standards assume that there would be one wheelchair ramp on each curb return. Current standards, just about everywhere these days is to provide two wheelchair ramps on each curb return so that the walking distance is reduced for pedestrians. And then not, not in all cases under our current standards, is there enough room for typical design vehicles to make a U-turn? And then we can also in the future consider whether a arterial, arterial intersection has a standard for dual left turn lanes and exclusive right turn lanes. That is generally when you expect heavier volumes at the intersections. What are the impacts for collector street? What it means is essentially a 13-foot additional dedication from each side of the street for arterial. That's a 10 feet from each additional side of the street. That, that is, that is, of course, fairly impactful for those people developing on arterial or collector streets. The cost, the right of way is not currently included in the impact fee update. That is assumed to be the standard city collector and arterial design. If those standards are adopted by the City Council, dedication of that would be part of the development. Additional costs or the improvements. And a little bit about how the costs are figured out. It is assumed that these improvements go in on what is called a, what we call a magic mile. And that is a one-mile-by-one-mile section called bear dirt if it were to develop from scratch. So for each magic mile, you'll have traffic signals at each corner, at the mid-block on the arterials, and at the collector by collector. The arterials basically go along the edge of the magic mile, and the collectors are interior to the magic mile. So for each arterial, we have four traffic signals. We have one mile, excuse me, two miles of arterials and two miles of collectors. If we were to stick with the existing standard, the cost of all those improvements would be about $12 million. Under conceptual standard that is shown in the, in the previous exhibits, that cost jumps to about $15.6 million for reimbursements. Undergrounding is also included in the impact fee program, and that's currently at about $9.4 million. Areas where direction is appreciated. Each item of the enhanced standard has just one piece of rather puzzle, of a rather large puzzle. Council may wish to provide direction on some items based simply on opinion or of need or desire to conclude on the road network. Council may also wish to delay the decision on others until given the opportunity to see and compare draft impact fees with other agencies. I, I expect that there will be differences, and they could be significant in some cases. And the fee shown in the draft impacts, the fee study will be adjusted based upon that feedback, the feedback that we received tonight. Areas where direction is appreciated is most specifically sidewalks. Do we maintain five feet or six feet? The impact fee program assumes a reimbursement for the additional one foot. Staff does recommend that the sidewalk be remain at six feet as proposed. That is just part of improving the walkable portion of the vision plan. Bike lanes, staff does recommend the inclusion of the bike lanes. Council can, might want to go ahead and comment on the four-foot versus the five-foot bike lane. As indicated, the five-foot is, is more, is an ideal width, but four-foot is acceptable. It's, it's generally a minimum standard. The arterial width, do we maintain 16 feet or 17 feet? The update assumes that there's reimbursement for the extra one feet or one foot. Staff can support maintaining the existing 16-foot median. I have reviewed a couple other nearby agencies with regard to their median width, and they have not increased to 17-foot. One of the things about the, the wider width for the pedestrian refuge, it's not just pedestrians that may attempt to stay there. Bicycles sometimes attempt to stay there. And bicycles are generally a little bit longer, and they need about five feet or so to go ahead and take refuge. So when you take a 17-foot median and you put in, say, 11-foot left turn pocket, you're left with 16, and that's, that's, that's fairly well adequate to handle pedestrians and or bicycle, but there it is potential that the existence of input standard will work. Collector median lane, that's just a striped lane. Questions maintaining as 12 or increase to 14. The existing standard assumes 12 feet. The reason it was proposed to go to 14 feet is 14-foot allows cars to move out of the through travel lanes a bit quicker. When you're aiming to go ahead and fit inside that 12-foot lane, it takes a little bit longer to get out of the way. But 12-foot is acceptable, which is why staff can support a 12-foot, but we would recommend a 13-foot. Collector lane width, they're, they're showing as 12-foot in all cases. Staff can support 11-foot in the outside lane, but we do recommend 12-foot across the board. Collector park strips, this is, this is where we, where there's some potential to go ahead and reduce the impacts on, on, on the costs and development. Is, the question is to maintain a 10-foot park strip on collectors or increase to 15 feet per conceptual standard. Going back to 10 feet is essentially what we have right now. It, the vision plan, I believe, suggested wider park strips for the purposes of aesthetics. So that would be a question here. The staff is recommending that we, that we increase it from 10 feet to 11 feet to accommodate a six-foot sidewalk if, if, if council elects to keep it, to use a six-foot sidewalk. With regard to the arterial park strip, those were shown to be increasing to 20.5 foot in conceptual standard. Staff can support that being reduced fairly substantially too. It does, again, going back to the existing arguably places it exactly the same way, place as it was when the vision plan recommended a wider park strip. Either way, staff would recommend increase to 11 feet to accommodate the, a wider sidewalk if determined appropriate by council. The results of the recommendations. Uh, the results of the recommendations. Based upon what I just recommended and what uh the, the, the pure recommendations. The right of way width would drop to a hundred and six feet to about ninety-four feet from the current eighty feet. The current standard has eighty feet. Uh, the recommendations would take us down to ninety-four foot. It's important to note that our current standards do have an assumption of a, of a, of adding bike lanes. Um, when the bike lanes are added, our current standard does go up to about ninety-four feet. So this generally matches our current standard with the optional bike lanes. The reason the uh, the reason the, the optional bike lanes were in there was we do have a bike plan and it shows. Bicycle lanes in certain parts of the city. And I ostensibly, we would be recommending those as, as bike lanes. So, the uh, the recommendations for the change in the standard provides bike lanes on all city arterial and collector streets. The uh, of note, most of the additional cost comes from the bike lanes, park strip and wider lanes. Uh, and also, uh, the city standard currently illustrates the bike lane option ninety-four feet. I've already discussed that. With regard to an arterial, the recommended changes takes us from about a hundred and twenty feet to a hundred and one foot. Our, our current standard is a hundred foot. So, most of the cost associated with the, with the, with the conceptual standards with everything in it is coming from, from the park strip. The park strips went from about ten feet to twenty feet. Uh, so it's a substantial increase, taking us from about a hundred to a hundred and twenty. And with that, it, it basically, this standard. Physically, from curb to curb, at a hundred and one feet, it is pretty much our existing standard. With the exception of the, the additional um. Uh, the addition of the bike lane and the additional one foot for that bike lane. The uh, the arterial does have extra space, so the bike lane generally just drops in place of where the, what probably was a parking lane before. Uh, I can move on or we can uh take questions at this point with regard to the cross sections.
Uh, just go ahead and move on, Keith.
Okay, well.
Finish this up.
Okay. Okay, uh, the underground overhead utilities. Uh, currently, the property, properties that have overhead lines, they're obligated to underground at development. Uh, that's the only point in time where they may potentially underground. When they, when they submit an application to our planning department, the, the. Typical conditions say to underground. Uh, while not verified, staff anticipates that the land value can, can vary based upon existence or non-existence over, over headlines. So you buy land on one side of the street. With power lines on it, um and not buy, and buy land on the opposite side and. Ostensibly, the, there's a difference in cost. If it's well understood what the cost of undergrounding is. It's, it's believed but not known by staff that the, that that price is taken into account in purchase and sale prices. If there was a reimbursement program, the uh, the value of land probably might very well get closer. To equal from one side of the street. Uh, the cost of undergrounding varies significantly. Knowledge of the potential cost is not always close to being reflective of actual cost underground. We, we used to think undergrounding ran about three hundred and fifty dollars a foot, though probably six, six plus years ago. We think it's well in excess of six hundred dollars a foot. We usually find out that's gone up significantly when we come up with the next project. And I believe that the developers also see those fairly similar costs. Um, and the city regularly, regularly receives requests for waivers of deferrals of undergrounded requirements. Uh, that is, uh, that's, that's something to go, that the, that staff does deal with and uh it does go back to the planning commission to go ahead and address. Those, those requests for waivers. Um, sometimes they have a good point, sometimes they, they don't necessarily. What it usually comes down to is the cost of, of undergrounding and how it impacts our project. If they're all on the same pit, level, um, to all in the same level, then. Uh, it would be hoped that the undergrounding occurs on a more regular basis or more consistent basis. Why including the impact fees? Spread all, all, spread cost to all the land on the same basis that the road feeds are assigned. The most, many folks, as I said, that if they don't have undergrounding, they don't pay for the cost, but when they do have, have uh. Overhead, they do pay for that cost and it's a little bit of a lopsided situation. Uh, and the uh, it may reduce some uncertainty development of cost of land. It's uh always good to know what your land is going to cost to develop. Uh, for an update, staff did determine approximate quantity of overhead utility lines within our urban growth boundary. Uh, that came up to two hundred and twenty-seven million dollars over about seventy-two miles of road, eh? And that's based upon six hundred dollars a foot. Assigned to the magic mile, the ratio that power lines are observed, uh, this increases the magic mile cost by about nine point three million dollars. I think I have a typo in here because I recall saying nine point six million dollars earlier in this presentation. Uh, this increases the impact fee by about seventy-nine percent by including uh the power lines. And it impacts, increased the impact fee by more than sixty foot percent if applied to the enhanced standard or the conceptual standard. As I've referred to it also. With that, that represents the conclusion of this presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I see, I lost it. Hold on a second. Okay. Councilmember Montez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank you, Keith, for the presentation. Um, I couldn't help but hearing on a lot of the, a lot of the items. Um, there were some staff recommendations, but there was also staff with support. Uh, but, so it sounds like. Staff does uh, or is of the opinion that the full enhanced standard would be best?
Yeah, the uh, for instance, uh, the, the collector lanes, you know, we, we can support a reduction in the outside lane from. Uh, twelve foot to eleven foot. Uh, the reason I say that is twofold. Uh, there are some standards that suggest that narrow lanes result in slower speeds on, 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 uncertain um. Facilities, uh, so that to some degree is a traffic calming effect. I also say to eleven feet because of. The outside lane is buffered by a twelve foot lane to the left and a bike lane to the right. So, uh. Sometimes travel, travel lanes are, are, are twelve foot travel lanes are to some degree based upon the fact that uh. You want drivers to feel comfortable as they're going down the road. But as you start to squeeze the travel lanes from twelve foot to eleven foot and to even ten feet. Drivers start to slow down. When you get to eleven feet, they're still doing fine. They'll slow down just a little bit, be more careful. When you get to ten feet, you're going to see a lot of people who get absolutely paranoid driving down that street. Uh, so, my. My preference is to not ever go below eleven feet, but I have been forced to go there before. You know, sometimes you don't have the room, but that's, that's an example of my uh saying we, we can support.
Okay, and then on the impacts on development, we don't think that the full enhanced standards would have a significant impact on development. Um, it sounds like if we get ahead of this or we kind of let developers know, essentially what to expect, it kind of um. I don't want to say hedges, but they, they know what they're getting into, so they kind of have a little more ease on, on coming or developing projects.
This, this might be a, to some degree, this might be a better, a better answer by other folks, but I'll take my stab at it. Uh, everything that we do that in, that increases the cost is, 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 is passed along to the, the buyer or the developer. Uh, ultimately, so when we take an additional uh ten feet on one side of the street, that's ten foot by the length of the project. That they've lost for development. That results in a reduction of the number of apartments or houses or commercial area they can build. Um, it also results in to, to some degree in an increase in construction costs. Though we, though the impact fee program is proposed, is, is absorbing uh many of those costs. It's absorbing the landscape costs. It's absorbing. One foot of the sidewalk. Are they accepting of it? I don't know. We may find out differently. I, I, I. I, I expect that there will be uh lively discussion with regard to such a proposal.
Because, I mean, as councilman, we're coming from a, a place where we want to have high standards. We want to have nice things. We don't want to say, well. And I hear this all the time and it, it really um makes me mad when, oh, it's just Madera. Well, yeah, but you know, we, we. I think Madera deserves a lot. I think our residents deserve a lot. Um, and you know, we do want to understand the developer's side as well. So, that's, that's where I'm coming from. So, but it does sound like um. The full enhanced standards are what staff is recommend, what, what staff would be uh most pleased with or would recommend.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and give you a little bit of history on, on the full enhanced standard. These, these, as I indicated, date back to two thousand and sixteen. Uh, and this was a collaborative effort between the engineering, planning and parks departments. So, engineering proposed its particular standards. And uh, I believe it was the parks department that was suggesting the, the larger enhanced areas for the, the landscaping. Uh, right now, I'm, I'm to some degree speaking for the parks department in, in, in terms of that. Uh, but that, that was the recommendation from parks at the time.
Yeah, if I may just jump in, Mayor, um.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, um, I think what Keith had provided was, was a happy median. In between the existing standard and the concept standard. And so, in terms of the travel lanes. Keith is not, or staff is not recommending substantial uh deviations from the travel lane. However, we, we are. Does my microphone sound awkward?
Yeah, it does sound a little hollow.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me change microphones. Is that any better?
That is better.
Okay, thank you. And so, so staff is recommending some slight modifications. That, that would result in a higher standard than the existing standard, but not the full width of the concept standard. Am I correct in saying that, Keith? Um, and one of the challenges is, is making sure that, that the community is aesthetically pleasing. But at the same time, we're not eating up so much land and landscaping, which we all know is going to take water and additional resources. So it's a balancing act, but at the same time, we're trying to accommodate pedestrian cyclists in traffic. And so what we're trying to do is say, we want better standards than what we have today, but at the same time, we don't want to make it cost prohibitive. To the concept standard that was envisioned in two thousand and fifteen. The concept standard in two thousand and fifteen is actually more representative of, of the model cities. Program in the US in nineteen sixties, where for example, northeast Fresno is a very good example, where you have e- e- extremely wide landscape buffers. That take up a lot of resources. They look really nice. I will be the first to admit. When they're well maintained, they look really good. There's typically an acoustical wall at the bent, um, at the back of the landscape area that provides noise mitigation for the people that live adjacent to it. But it all comes at a cost, both in terms of resources and in terms of land. And what uh staff's recommendation is, is somewhere in the middle. We're trying to make sure that we have a, a, a very nice community, but at the same time, that we're trying to mitigate it a little bit, but at the same time, we're still trying to be very careful. With ensuring that we have safety, both for cyclists, pedestrians, um. Travelers, and at the same time, we're trying to provide an adequate buffer for the people that live adjacent to those areas, but trying to provide some kind of sound attenuation, because as we all know. Uh, sound is very high along some of these roads and it's not from the vehicle engine, rather, it's from the tires hitting the pavement. And trying to mitigate that's always kind of a challenge. So, so staff's proposal somewhere in the middle this evening. It's not the, the concept standard, which you heard Keith say, it's, it takes a lot of land and money. It would be pretty cool if we could do that, but the problem is coolness comes at a cost, at a very expensive cost. Uh, so hopefully that helped, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. So Keith, uh, and I, I heard you say that, uh, you know, prospective buyer, um, would, would buy on one end. Um, maybe a piece of property that already has uh the, the overhead wires versus the underground. Now, you've also talked about reimbursement. So, how, how, how do you spread that reimbursement for, for any developer that's looking to, to jump into a project? Is that spread over a certain period of time?
Uh, the, the, if we, if we, the reimbursement, i- if we have the money in the bank, we reimburse entirely for the cost of that. Now, how the. How that's spread out is uh for any, any, any development that occurs. Uh, a single family development will pick up a fee per house. Uh, commercial, office, retail, uh, they'll pick up a fee per square foot. It's spread out. Amongst the various uses based upon uh, within the impact fee study, more based upon. Uh, the, the trip lanes that are associated with the uh, the, the, the uses themselves. Now, I, 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 I'm going to try to avoid getting into too much detail about how the uh, how the, how that fee study is, is presented, but. With, they are using a formula, our consultant is using a formula that's based upon uh the uh, the traffic that's associated with each type of development. And attempting to say if you have, as an example, a daily trip that results, results in ten miles uh per vehicle. Per uh square foot or whatever, you get a unit of uh cost. If you have. If it's twenty miles per that unit, then you would have double the cost. So it's e- essentially these costs are being spread to each of those uses based upon their impacts on the road system. There's probably an easier way to say it, their impacts on the road system.
And, and those reimbursements, Keith, are they done immediately to the builder or they, uh, are they collected at some point? Uh, so if the builder. Was out to uh, put the infrastructure that's needed for underground. Um, would that be reimbursed upon completion and then collected on the individual homeowners or is that. Uh, somewhat of a, a spread over a certain amount of time?
Uh, there, there, there's an ideal in there that uh, that they would be reimbursed immediately. Uh. At present, uh, many of our, our impact fee funds are deficient in the ability to go ahead and refund fully. So if, if the funds haven't uh pulled together enough cash. The system works in it as a first in, first out type basis. If you complete an improvement. And it make up a number, it, it costs five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, if the impact fee account only has two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and they are first in line, we will reimburse them for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then they will be first in line. For the next two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as, as it is received. Ideally, that's reimbursed every three months as, as funds are collected. Under the new impact fee program, uh, some fees will go up, uh. Potentially go up meaningfully. Uh, others will stay about the same as they are. Ideally, it's, it's designed to go ahead and pay for all infrastructure within the city that is designed to be reimbursed. But sometimes, uh, certain uh development goes in that creates a demand, but doesn't necessarily create the, the. The, the bank account that we need to reimburse. So it's a, it, uh, it's, it's not perfect. And most developers know that they uh, they won't get reimbursed re- immediately at times.
Thank you, Keith. And last question, um, I know I did a lot of numbers at us and, and I'm sorry, but I am a visual person, so the, the conceptual diagrams. That you showed on the back with the attachments, you have some collector uh standards and then you have your arterial standards.
Yes.
Were those your originals that were presented? And I, I noticed that, you know, we're looking to squeeze that down, but is there one in particular there that, that kind of fits the model of what staff is recommending?
Uh, I, I think they all fit the model. I can go back to whichever standard you're interested in, describe the differences between our existing. Uh, uh, as an example, the arterial, I, I indicated that uh, uh, the current standard is a hundred feet and we're proposing a hundred and one feet. And by the way, since I'm saying a hundred and one feet, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and make a minor change to take that up to a hundred and two feet. Because uh, asking for a dedication of fifty point five feet doesn't make sense and I believe our, our landscape, uh, um. Park strip is something like nine point five or ten point five. It'd be best to just go ahead and round that off as well. Uh, what, what happens in the end is, is the landscape is, you have, currently you have a five foot sidewalk and you have four and a half feet of landscaping. Doesn't, it, it works, but it, it, uh, when you're increasing the uh, the right of way, you might as well just go to the even and call it five foot. So we would get about a half foot more of landscaping. So I'll uh, I'll go to a standard here real fast.
The, the second standard, the arterial, the hundred and twenty.
Okay. Yeah, that's that one there. Okay, so, the, the difference on this one is it shows a, a seventeen foot median, six and a half, both sides of the center line. Oh, I didn't, didn't save it, did I? Or share it? Here we go.
Thank you.
There you go. I was just going to say that. I'm not seeing it. Just before I click the button, um, anyway, the median uh shows seventeen feet. The existing median uh is, is sixteen feet. So that represents a difference and pushes the, the curve out a half a foot on each side of the, of the street. The travel lanes are essentially the same at twelve foot each. It's over here by the bike lanes where the, there used to be a. It's over here by the bike lanes where the, there used to be about eight feet between face of curb and where a car might end up sitting.
So Keith, if you don't mind, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You mind showing the actual colorful picture there so that I can, um, I, I see what you're saying through the draft. There you go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, so, uh, again, the, the median is seventeen versus sixteen. Twelve foot lanes are generally what they are today. It's the outside that is, it has no real purpose at, at the present time, because it's an old standard and I believe it was, uh, I believe it might have been planned for parking, but since before I arrived at the city, uh, parking on arterials and collectors has been prohibited. So new development receives a condition that says, uh, install no parking signs. So this is just repurposing the outside of, of the arterial roadway. Now, as far as the park strip, it's, uh, I think it's nine and a half feet from property line to, uh, back a curb, or excuse, yeah, to, to nine and a half to back a curb, which leaves you with a, with a, uh, with an odd number. You got five foot of sidewalk and four and a half foot of landscaping. It, uh, might as well just round that to five foot of landscaping and have an even number in terms of dedication, assuming the hundred and two foot works out to be the accepted standard tonight.
And, and that's where you come up with the one oh two. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to see. So thank you. Appreciate that, Keith.
You're welcome.
So I, I had a question, Keith, regarding the sidewalks. So you're, you're, you're recommending an, an increase to five foot sidewalks from four?
Five, well, to six from five.
To six from five?
Yes.
So that is quite a bit of sidewalk.
It, it is, but, uh, the, um, I've seen a, a number of standards that recommend six foot these days. And I've also seen, I, I think Fresno and between Fresno and Clovis, the standard will vary between four and six, depending upon where you're at. Um, the, the vision plan suggests a walkable, likable city, and that's, that's why six foot was originally proposed. And the, um, some of the practicalities of six foot, i- if you think about a five foot standard, uh, do most people find it comfortable to go ahead and walk side by side with somebody that, you know, the mother and father walking their child in, in the stroller? Does, does five foot work? That's, that, you know, that's an example of six foot might be something that's more enjoyable in terms of walks through the city. Uh, five foot I'll call more utilitarian. It works, but may not be as enjoyable.
Uh, my second question is regarding the waivers for undergrounding. You mentioned that briefly, um, that some developers get a pass and others do not, and they have to justify, you know, do that. What, what is the justification for one developer getting a waiver and another one not getting a waiver?
Well, it's, it's, it's been, it's been almost exclusively deferrals. I've been, uh, you know, the last couple of years or so, um, since it's been, the last couple of years or so, I've been trying to go ahead and make certain that, that, that the deferrals do not occur. I'm pushing them back to Planning Commission. I believe that the Planning Commission is the, is the sole authority for determining that, uh, prior to, uh, assuming that's the direction from our city council. So the, there was a time when deferrals were requested. Um, I, I'm, I'm pushing them back to Planning Commission. Uh, where they did occur, I can, I, I can give examples. Existing developments might set, might be adding on a small business and then they have power lines in there. They would request a deferral. There has been deferrals that, um, provided for, well, you, you, the next development you do, you'll have to go ahead and do this. It's kind of like prepping them for it. I don't necessarily believe that the op, the opportunity is ever going to come for that, for that particular undergrounding to occur. Uh, but, but there have been deferrals for that. There have been deferrals for, uh, it's too expensive and we don't want to do it because it's too expensive. There will be, there's, there's at least one that's going to Planning Commission in the near future where, um, I indicated to them, they can go ahead and present that to Planning Commission with regard to their, their thoughts. But the, this type of standard, if, if the underground is included, uh, there would be no, there would be no debates over undergrounding and deferrals. There are no waivers.
Good. That makes sense. Thank you. Um, any more comments from my colleagues? Is there any public comment, Alicia?
No, Mayor.
Does council want to provide any direction tonight?
Counsel, I believe that, that staff is requesting direction and, uh, they've made a number of recommendations. So, so if, if council is in agreement with the recommendations, so somebody could make a motion to proceed with the recommendations. Uh, and then the other layer would be, uh, the support. Uh, maybe if, if you, if all you do is, uh, direction, give direction on the recommendation, that means that everything else falls off. So if you want something to be added regarding, uh, staff support, then you would specifically reference those. There's quite a bit there. Um.
Yeah, there is. But thank you very much for that, Hilda. Uh, Keith, did you have something else to say?
Yeah, I, I just want to go ahead and clarify that the, the, the recommendation for six foot is for arterial and collectors only. It does not include residential or local streets or the like. Those will remain at five feet.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, Councilwoman Gallegos.
I motion to accept the recommendations for staff on this, um, item A one. A second.
A motion, um, to accept the recommendation of staff on eight, item eight one, um, uh, by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by, uh, Councilwoman Evans. Alicia, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with five yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that report, Keith. We now move on to item B, consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify, um, and maybe it's be, but you said five zero? Or six zero? I, I've heard six zero, five zero twice.
Am I leaving someone off? It should be six zero. My apologies.
Yeah, on the adoption of the agenda on this one, I just want to make a correction.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent counter and it will be considered separately. Alicia, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on a consent calendar item?
Not at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now ask for a motion from my colleagues.
Mayor, I'd like to pull before.
Before, okay. Completely or to discuss?
Well, we should approve the consent counter and then come back to before after it's approved.
You want to discuss before?
May I comment?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you. Um, I will ask for a motion from my colleagues on the consent calendar.
So I moved your, for the consent counter as presented excluding before.
Second.
Motion, um, Councilmember Gallegos on before, I mean, um, on the cassette counter to approve, uh, second by Councilmember Rodriguez. Alicia, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Gallegos?
Yes, before, I just wanted to, um, put a shout out to Dave Christensen Construction Company for, uh, completing the job on station fifty six and fifty seven on the asphalt of the pavement and that they came under budget even with change orders being put in place. Uh, I think this is the first time that we've had this in the city in a while, um, complete, on time, within, under budget and with change orders including. So a shout out to Dave Christian Construction and we thank them here as residents in the city of Madera. And with that, I'd like to approve B four on the consent calendar.
Second that. Motion to approve item B four by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item C, public hearings. Item C one, public hearing to consider declaration of nuisances and abatement order for weeds and debris. I believe, Mr. Lawson, you have this?
I, yes, sir. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, tonight, uh, before use a public hearing, uh, to consider uh, the nuisance and abatement order for weeds and debris. However, uh, as we do at the PD, I defer to the experts on this. Um, and therefore our code enforcement, uh, Officer Fabela will be presenting this because she did all the hard work behind it. Uh, and it's only appropriate that she gets to present her hard work before the councils and the citizens of our community. So without further ado, uh, let's get into the weeds, as we would say.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Fabela Rodriguez. I'm a code enforcement officer at the Madera Police Department. Um, and this is a public hearing to consider declaration of nuisances and abatement order for weeds and debris. Weed abatement ordinance was passed on January two thousand and fifteen. Weed abatement season started in March. Inspections were conducted on more than three hundred vacant lots. There are currently four lots that are not in compliance. Originally, five properties were found in violation, but as of this morning, only four properties are not in compliance. Um, at, when I first started my inspections, I inspected over three hundred and ninety seven lots, um, to make sure that they were in violation. The, the inspections take me about a week. So what is weed abatement? The weed abatement program is designed to prevent fire hazards created by overgrown vegetation and combustible debris. My goal every year for this program is to achieve compliance through voluntary compliance. So this is the municipal code for the weed abatement ordinance, and this is the owner responsibilities. Uh, property, property owners are required to maintain their properties clear of weeds, trash and debris. The clearance standards for parcels over five, eight, five acres, we require them to total, totally mow or remove all weeds and dispose of all the items. Parcels over five acres, they need to create a fire break around the perimeter, perimeter of at least thirty feet. And the weed abatement process is, is as follows. First off, I start off with the inspections. I look for anything over six inches, any trash, any obstructions of public right of way. I then issue a forty five day notice of violation. The notice is, uh, letting property owners know that their property is in violation. Notices are mailed to property owners to mailing addresses reported, recorded at the assessor's office. A forty five day notice of violation also serves as a notice of hearing. After the forty five day, after the forty five days are up, then I do the re-inspections. If all, if the property is in compliance, no further action is taken. If, if, if it is not in compliance, then the further enforcement action is taken, such as citations and possibly an abatement. We then move to the abatement process. We schedule a hearing. All property owners are notified about the hearing via mail. Once we conduct the abatements, once we get the okay, then we go on to the cost recovery. Property owner is billed for the abatements, which includes the contractor's cost and a two hundred and fifty dollar administration fee. If property owner fails to pay, then a lien is placed on the property. So why is weed abatement important? It prevents fires, protects the health and safety of the public, keeps rides away accessible, prevents damages to abutting properties, discourages illegal dumping and reduces life in the city. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, five properties were in violation, but as of this morning, only the four, uh, they remain in violation of our municipal code three dash fifteen point zero five owner responsibilities, and they are the following properties. A fifteen bloker, it's in the middle of a residential area. A notice of violation was issued back on March thirty first. I then issued a hundred dollar citation on May eighteen. Then we have seven oh one South A. This is a repeat offender. So ever since I started doing the weed abatement, uh, program back in two thousand and fifteen, it's always been on my list. Um, there is another vacant lot right behind this lot and that property owner always takes care of it. This is the only one, like I said, it's a repeat offender. A notice of violation was also issued back in March and a citation for one hundred dollars was issued on May eighteen. We then have eight, seven, six, East Olive. Uh, this is almost ten acres. It's across the street from an elementary school. Notice of violation was issued March thirty first, citation for one hundred dollars on May eighteen. And the last property is twelve, five, East Almond. This is on the corner of a busy intersection in a commercial area. An, an O V was issued as well, March thirty first. Citation was issued May eighteen for one hundred dollars. So that concludes my presentation. I now, I request for the approval of a resolution at the end of the public hearing, authorizing the abatement of weed nuisances existing within the city. Alternatively, council may elect to not approve the resolution. However, abatements will not be conducted and properties will remain in violation of the Madera Municipal Code constituting fire and safety hazards. Any questions or any comments?
I have Mr. Montes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, uh, Fabela. Um, so on all of these, I hear you mentioned on a couple of them that they did receive a, a fine or citation. Um, in the process that they may, did all of the original five receive, um, a citation on the eighteenth of May?
Yes, they did. As of that day, all five properties were still in violation.
Okay. I, I had some inquiries on that and I told them that, yeah, you probably received a citation already because the,
Yeah.
But, uh, it looks like at least one of them was taken care of since, uh, last Thursday. So thank you for, for taking care of all that.
Thank you.
You coming back to code enforcement in Madera, Mr. Mr. Montes?
Yeah. I still get those questions all the time. So, okay. It just comes naturally.
Um, I inadvertently, um, lowered the hand of somebody, but then I lost count of where. Uh, Councilwoman Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, that my hand was still waving in the air. So Fabela, I have several questions. Um, I was out and about today, um, with another council member to kind of look at the city. And we saw a lot of weeds that were not cleaned up and, um, not knowing the three hundred and ninety seven that you said that were cited, I'm assuming that they were not part of the three hundred and ninety seven because the weeds are pretty high. Um, so they weren't part of the four or the five that you showed us right now. And I could probably name six lots that we saw today that weeds were above six inches. So how, how does that work if we are now done with our, our report?
Well, the notice of violation is valid for a whole year. So anytime within that whole year, if they, if by any reason they're out of compliance, we go back out, take a look at it, inspect it. If we find it out of compliance, then we issue another citation. Um, most of the time, we already have contact information for these property owners. So we get ahold of them. We, if there's no compliance, then, like I said, we would issue a citation.
Okay, so some of the areas we saw are overlap from the city and the county. Are we working with the county? When it comes to the weeds that are on, like, when we overlap our, our properties?
I do have a contact for the county. So if there's any issues, I always, I can contact Anna over at the county and we can go over these properties and see what we can do.
So have we contacted Anna? Because some of the properties we saw today were an overlap that we did see.
I'm not, I've contacted her about certain, some properties. If you want to send me a list, I can see, um, what we can do and I can get in contact with her.
And so are we also looking at the minor permanent areas that are not like the big lots, but smaller areas?
Yeah, so we're also looking at smaller areas. Um, but anything that's fenced, we can't, we don't have access to it. So, like I said, if, we can't, we don't have access to it. So, like I said, if anything that's fenced, just let us know. Um, we probably already have a case. If not, we can open a case on it, contact the property owner and get them to come out and take care of the property.
Okay, so out of the three hundred and ninety-seven, this is a question I don't know if you have the answer for. How many of those properties are repeat offenders?
Out of the three ninety-seven?
Yes.
I want to say about fifteen of them. But by the time the abatement comes, they get it taken care of.
Okay, so when we give them, um, a notice of violation, is there a, a fine that comes with it or is that not until we give them forty-five days and then? I kind of know the answer, but I'm putting it out there for the new council members because I don't think they know the process.
The fine doesn't come after, until after the reinspection. So May fifteen was the deadline. We went out May seventeenth to do the re-inspections. Um, at that point, then the citations are issued if they're out of compliance.
Okay, is we, and I'm assuming we don't as council have something written down. I just feel that if we have fifteen repeat offenders that don't do it because they just are know it's going to happen, the city is going to either clean it for them or they're going to cite or they're going to send us a notice of violation. It's, it's our staff time that's going out there to go ahead and tell them again, hey, you know, you need to clean this up. We're sending, we're taking our staff time to give them a notice of violation. Is there something that we need to adjust in our ordinance saying that if you're a repeat offender, I think it should be an automatically a fine and it shouldn't be a notice of violation because this is something that we have to come after you every year. At least fifteen of you of every year.
Well, yes, um, but the notice of violation is kind of giving them a heads up, like, hey, your property is in violation. You need to go out there, you need to clean it up, and it's something we do every year. Now, as far as the ordinance goes, if we were able to tweak something there to where it says that we can just come out and abate it and you will be charged, that would be helpful and I think that would bring compliance, more compliance from these, uh, repeat offenders.
Okay, so I'm just putting it out there to my colleagues. And I don't know, we need to look at something that Hilda has to chime in on that, but if it's a repeat offender, we're spending energy and time on our staff, them knowing that they're like, kind of like a run woman, they're just being bad actors. They just choose not to abide by the rules and they are just, um, letting it slide under the carpet. On the, on the note, on the abatement process, and that's a process where the city goes and cleans it up if they don't. And you're very fortunate, you only have five out of hundreds. Uh, that's a very, uh, good report for your city. Uh, but in any event, as far as doing it automatically, that would be impermissible under state law. You do have to, uh, provide a notice for, on the abatement causes. However, on the administrative citations, uh, you can issue a second administrative citation without a notice of violation as long as you follow the, the ordinance. But we will take another look, uh, with the chief and his staff uh, to see if there's anything else that we can, uh, improve on.
Yeah, and absolutely will. What, what we have to keep in mind too is that our initial notice is good for a year. So if they have that violation within it, we can just go out and cite after the forty-five days. So, but, but certainly I, I will direct my, uh, uh, officers here to look at that and we can bring something back to you.
Okay, and if Bella, I'm sure you have a list of the three ninety-seven, um, like just typed up like in a spreadsheet, if you can send it to the council or have chief, um, someone that can forward it so that when we're driving around, um, that we can like refer back to it and not have to bother you on, on a, on a property that's already on the list.
Okay.
Kind of like when we were doing alleys and stuff, if we have a list, it kind of helps. If somebody's calling and saying, hey, Councilwoman, there's this empty lot that weeds are out of control. Has the city done anything? Or I get an email, I can look at a list and say, we have, it's a notice of violations in place. They're, they're working through the process, it will be taken care of. And it just gives a little bit more in our pocket to deal with the, the public when they're out there asking questions.
Okay, you can do that.
Thank you.
Also, Member Montes.
I just wanted to piggyback on that. Um, if we can also look into the total cost recovery. Because there's one thing is about the fine, which a lot of people will get, um, but the ones, the perpetual line steppers are the ones that I think Fabela is referring to are the, you know, the repeat offenders. Um, we have to go through the whole process and we have to go through the whole rigmarole every time with them. So I think it's only fair to have them pay for that rather than the rest of our residents. Um, and so if we can look at the total cost recovery on that so that it's, I mean, technically it's a fine or, you know, a fee, but, uh, make them a little bit more responsible. So uh, just motivate them a little bit more to get into compliance or to stay in compliance.
Okay.
The recommendation, Chief Lawson, look into, look into this issue and do an update. We can look at tweaking the ordinance, providing an update so that we could move forward on this issue. I think it's a simple fix. Did you have something else, Councilwoman Gallegos?
Yes, just real fast, one more thing, Fabela. Um, I know some of these weeds are near, uh, Caltrans. Are we working with them? And some of the weeds are near our railroad tracks. I know the railroad is very difficult to work with, but are we having conversations with those two partners to make sure that they're also being responsible for those weeds in our city? Um, and that we're not just cleaning up with, that's their responsibility.
With the railroad, yes, I've already contacted them. I've left several messages. I've emailed them. Um, I'm just waiting for them to reply. Like you, you're right, it's very hard to get a hold of them. Um, and as far as Caltrans goes, I haven't had a chance to get a hold of Caltrans, but I can do that too.
Is there some, I'm, I'm hearing there's some over nearby, uh, um, off ramp and ninety-nine and Kennedy, uh, at the Starbucks and Subway. I've, I've been hearing about a lot of weeds in there and that's not ours. I mean,
Yeah.
We'll take responsibility for what's ours in the city, but our partners need to take responsibility with, they're supposed to, um, upkeep in their areas.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for Fabela. Um, a lot of these citations that you give, I know that a lot of people correct them. Could you share with us what their major issues are with, uh, with why they leave weeds and more specifically the residential?
I've had a couple who just can't get a hold of any contractors to come out and do it for them. Others, I just don't get any response from them. I've had one where she doesn't want any responsibility. She doesn't want anything to do with the property, so she just leaves it there and we have to do it. Um, but most of the time, like I said, it was the contractor, they can't get a hold of anybody, they're out of town. Um, which sometimes I do provide a list for them. If they send me, if they provide me with an email address, their information, I give them the list of the contractors that we used in the past. Um, but that's the main excuse for why they don't really take care of their lots.
Thank you. And is your weed abatement, th- does that cross over to residential units, for example, like landscape?
No, it doesn't. This is only for vacant lots.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, before we get any further into the weeds, uh, I'll ask Alicia if we have any public comment.
No, Mayor, not at this time.
Thank you very much. Um, I will ask, uh, for action, uh, from my colleagues. This is on the, um, adopted resolution regarding the, uh, the, uh, proposed, uh, removal of weed and abatements.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt item C one.
Thank you.
Motion to approve item C one by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Montes. Alicia, would you call the role?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much for that report, Fabela.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. Um, item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances and agreements. Item D one, I don't want to, well, I should, landscape and lighting assessment district zones of benefit. Engineers report intention to levy and collect annual assessment for citywide landscape and lighting assessment district zones of benefit for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I believe, who do we have here? So, oh, this is the one that you were doing, um, um. Nicole?
Yes, sir.
On the, the floors yours.
Uh, thank you. If I could just share my screen with you. Okay, everybody should see. Can we see my?
Yes.
Okay. So tonight, we're going to talk about the landscape maintenance districts within the city. Um, we'll start with the, uh, history of the engineer support. This is prepared on an annual basis. Uh, it incorporates past expenses and revenue and projects expenses and revenue. Uh, it makes recommendations on adjustments to assessments based on data that is populated in the city's accounting system, which is UNIS. Uh, as far as this year, um, it incorporates everything the Parks Department has learned about the zones over the last four years. Um, there'll be no proposition two eighteen, uh, hearings occurring this year, which is what we typically do if we needed to increase an assessment in a zone that is not have that in, uh, the zone's covenant. Uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic has increased the yearly cost construction index, which is a metric that we use to determine uh, how much we can raise an assessment if, uh, that is provided within the covenant. Um, this year it was seven point nine percent. Uh, in previous years, it ranged from one point four to four point four. Um, so it has gone up. Uh, depending on the year, anywhere from six to, you know, about three percent. Uh, additionally, we added a hundred eighty-two parcels into zone twenty-one D from the Melanie Meadows and Rancho Santa Fe subdivisions. Uh, we also did a, a prior year's assessment review. We were alerted to, uh, some of the increases in zones forty-one and forty-three A, uh, which prompted to review, review of last year's assessments. Um, we identified a few discrepancies and figures uh, between previous engineers reports and the current report as they relate to, uh, beginning and ending balances. Uh, staff will be working with finance to determine the correct information and how this may affect the assessments for the affected zones. And those corrected values will be reflected in the final report. Uh, next year, staff plans to resume proposition two eighteen hearings. Um, it is anticipated that the needed data can be provided, uh, at a time necessary to initiate these hearings. Uh, this has been mentioned previous years, but the opportunity hasn't come up. But, uh, we do remain hopeful that next year we can, um, get these proposition two eighteens, uh, done next year. Uh, we also still would like to pursue them, uh, pursue the mergers of zones ten through ten I. And, um, in these zones, the range of assessments is from seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents per parcel to thirty-three dollars and nine cents per parcel. Um, the benefits of merging these zones would make for nine less zones and lessen the complexities in managing all these zones where the sharing is not equal from, uh, one landscape area to another. Uh, the biggest impediment to combining these zones, uh, would be the, um, history of success with proposition two eighteens. Um, typically, it has not had a, uh, a high success rate, uh, when they come, uh, ready to go. Um, this is just a overview of all of the ten through ten I zones as they relate to, uh, one another. Um, you can see that they pretty much are all, uh, next to each other. They have been, uh, incorporated at different times. And you can see that they do share, excuse me, um, one second here. Uh, a shared landscape area here along, uh, Schnorr Avenue. And if we combine these zones, basically it makes sure that all zones are contributing equally to the shared uh, landscaping, uh, areas. Uh, and as mentioned, along with the reduced complexity of managing all these disparate, um, zones. Uh, finally, uh, one special note, the due to legal requirements, there is a ten day, uh, advance notice for public hearings. Um, that must be posted in the, uh, Madera Tribune. Uh, the deadline for publication for the, this coming Saturday was today by five P M. Uh, based on previous years, uh, the public hearing is normally done, the meeting after the one where this is presented. So we did, uh, file a um, public notice request with the Madera Tribune, uh, because of that, uh, deadline for publication. Um, and we'd like to propose a date of public hearing for next uh, council meeting on the twenty-first. Uh, so that, yeah, that's recommended actions, approve the engineer's report with amendments and schedule a public meeting for council session on seven twenty-one. Uh, do we have any questions?
Lost my page. But I do have several. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I believe, uh, Councilwoman Gallegos was up. Go ahead, CCL. Well, the only question I had for you, um, Nicole, was, uh, regarding the, the corrections. Now, you said that would be brought before us here, the discrepancies that you guys found. Is that something that you're asking us to approve? Uh, with those corrections be made later?
The corrections would be made and presented at the next, uh, city council meeting on the twenty-first.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gallegos?
I'm gonna say, I'd like to thank you for the report. Um, you got uh, slid through those hard questions I was going to ask on forty-one and forty-three A, so thank you very much for taking a look at that. Residents truly appreciate it and coming back with some new numbers. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Alicia, do we have any, uh, public comment on this issue?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now ask for, um, a motion or discussion from, well, a motion from my colleagues on, um, on item D one.
I so moved to approve T, D one with discrepancies, uh, that were presented tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second that.
Motion to approve item D one by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilman, uh, Montes. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much. Um, item D two is a public hearing on the City of Madera operating budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. I believe Roger, you have this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, uh, it's Mayor, council members. So I do have a very short presentation, uh, regarding the budget. As you recalled, on last week, we had an extensive, uh, special council meeting on the thirtieth of June, where we provide key assumptions and, uh, summary reports on the budget. So uh, tonight is, uh, more of a, an overview, a quick overview. So I'd like to, uh, share my screen with you. So this is the staff report that was submitted. I just wanted to point out a couple of items. One of them is, uh, there's a slight error here that I, uh, we made, uh, just to point out that the year. Uh, and also on the bottom, um, section, um, this, uh, component is from the previous year. So really, um, all the adjustments that are reflected on the budget are consistent with recent pay, pay adjustments, uh, as authorized by the council, by the city council. So this report gives a nice, uh, short overview of the budget. So I do recommend, uh, uh, if you have time to, to view that. Um, I also like to point really quick to the city budget. Uh, I'm gonna highlight some components on the city debt. If you look at the city budget and the city debt, there's, uh, uh, detailed descriptions of the city debt if you desire to look into that area as well. So while I'll provide in a minute, it'll be just a short, uh, slide. So let me share my presentation at this point. Very short presentation. So the purpose of the meeting is, uh, is if, uh, council, uh, desires, the budget should be adopted tonight and to provide a quick overview. Um, previously, we had multiple meetings and discussions regarding key assumptions, revenues, labor costs and operating expenses uh, with various meetings. Um, the, the, uh, proposed budget is, uh, it has a balanced budget. It is, um, so that's the good news. We did make some, uh, minor adjustments. We did make some minor adjustments or some adjustments related to the special revenue funds from the last meeting that we had to the new book. And basically, we made some improved revenue projections that came from the engineering team. So we just, there were some improvements there. So that's some good news on increased revenues. Again, that's for the special revenue funds. It doesn't affect the the general fund. We also made some small adjustments on the general fund. And but the revenues and expenses are in balance still. So total operating expenses by fund group, we have, just to give you an overview, seventy-eight million, seventy-eight point six million dollars. And this is excluding capital items. So within the general fund, it represents about fifty-three percent or forty-one, forty-one point five million dollars. The enterprise funds represents twenty-four point, twenty-seven point four million or thirty-five percent. And the special revenue funds is six point three million or eight percent, with the remainder on the internal service funds of three point five million or four percent. Citywide labor costs by fund group. We have on the general fund, we have a historical perspective here. And this is again labor cost. And you can see on the enterprise funds, special revenue and internal service funds for a total of labor costs. As you can see, this takes into account the recent pay increases along with some increases in health insurance and the pension cost. Citywide M and L by fund group, you can see the general fund, historical and the enterprise funds, special revenue funds and internal service funds for a total for the M and L. This main increase is mainly from the Fire Station Fifty-Eight, which is in operation now. And so that's how we pay the state. And also some increases on the property insurance as well. A quick overview on the city outstanding debt. So currently, by the end of the next fiscal year, the budget that we're proposing, the outstanding debt would be for the city sixty-three point two million dollars. This is excluding the successor agency. So this is broken by, by the different fund groups. You can see the general fund. It'll have a balance of four point two million, water, nine point five. The silver is biggest. We do also have a debt on the solar energy, a very tiny amount on the airport that should be paid off by next year. And the Gulf. So that was the outstanding debt. This chart represents the payments for the next, for the upcoming fiscal year. So we expect total payments, including, sorry, there's a typo there. We expect the total payment of five point four million dollars, including interest and principal payments. So this is a breakdown. As you can see, the general fund section, we do have the solar energy and other various obligations that we have with the biggest one on the water waste, water refunding revenue. So this is, on the silver is the biggest one. So the recommendation is that the city council adopt the resolution approving the city budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. And with that, if you, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just to point out clarification, at our last council meeting, when, when council was discussing this year's or next year's operating budget, we also discussed the capital improvement program, which was presented back in April by staff to the council. I know, I understand that during that meeting, a discussion was brought up regarding some, regarding a sidewalk on Schnorr Avenue. That was a grant for roughly two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars using C Mac funds. That, that is included in this evening's budget. With that being said, I also understand that that council at some point may want to entertain discussing that. And I'm saying may because it's, it's clearly the prerogative of the council, if that's a discussion point. However, if council does elect to approve tonight's budget, which again, doesn't, which it does include the capital improvement program, council can always bring that specific item back at a future council date or for further discussion. Again, that's, that's completely at council's discretion, and I did want to identify that. That, that the discussion for this, for the Schnorr Avenue sidewalk could potentially be a much larger discussion in terms of how sidewalks are allocated in the budget and which grants are available. So I did wanna put that out there for council, that if you do decide to adopt the budget, it does include that. But, but just like any document, every city document, especially the budget, is somewhat of a living document that, that can be adjusted at a future date. So hopefully that clarifies a couple of items, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to, to be clear, we can approve the budget tonight and still have the discussion later regarding sidewalks and the other projects.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Okay, all right.
Come here. Hopefully I didn't misspeak, and I'm gonna look at Hilda, and if Hilda nods and says yes, I, I'll feel a lot better.
Yes, I, I think that is accurate. The city council may adopt the budget tonight, which includes the C I P budget. And the city council at any time in the future may determine to amend that budget or the C I P operating budget. And the only prerequisite is to place it on an agenda and give staff some time to, to prepare a report and make a presentation to you.
Thank you. That, that makes a lot of sense. And it does to me to, to approve the budget tonight. And then we can move forward. There's a lot of work been done by the staff for this. Let's see, I had someone. Any more members of the wanting to discuss? Alicia, do we have any public comment?
Not at this time, Mayor.
I'll bring it back to council for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for the, for the budget that you worked on. And that was something that I was going to ask in, in reference to the, the C I P, the two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the snore. So that was something that I did want to discuss. But if we can pass the budget and then have that revisited, then I will wait on that as well. But I did want it to be brought back. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
Motion to approve D two as presented.
Mr. Montes, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did, I did have a question. Sorry about that. So regarding that specific item, I know we would just bring it back and have, have just a discussion for all of council, but would it be appropriate, and I guess this is for Hilda, to maybe assign an ad hoc for that specific item? Or would it not be something that we should or could do?
You could do that. You know how I feel about ad hoc committees. I don't, I don't know that this is something that needs an ad hoc committee. I think it's something that, that staff can bring back. And under that, that section where council members can request that items be added to the agenda, that can be presented at that time by Ms. Evans, asking that, you know, within a reasonable period of time, staff return with a detailed staff report and options regarding that particular project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And with that, I'll second Councilmember Gallegos's motion.
Motion to approve Item D two by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that report, Roger. We now move on to Item E, administrative reports. Item E one is an update on the Madera Police Department cameras and three-year arrest totals. Mr. Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, again. Let's get comfortable. This will be a verbal presentation. It, I timed it. It shouldn't be any more than three hours. So we'll get through this pretty quick. No, a little humor. So just very quick, I wanted to, wanted to bring everybody really up to speed. And, and, and I apologize for this not getting the information out. And, and to let everyone know what an outstanding job in, in a really cutting-edge department that you have and we have and our citizens have. And I'm proud to announce this evening that all of our employees in the field are outfitted with body cameras. That includes all of our patrol officers, all of our detectives, all of our special investigation unit investigators. And just recently, we entered into an agreement with the labor bargaining groups to have all of our code enforcement officers assigned body cameras. So we have a total of forty-four cameras and docking stations here at the P D. And usually when, when organizations discuss body cameras, they want to bring up cost, and they are expensive. However, we feel and our citizens and our council that this money was well spent, and we went and outfitted everybody because of the importance of it. So we wanted to let everyone know that everybody in the field has body cameras, and they've paid huge dividends in, in a lot, a lot of ways. So very proud of that. Now, also, not only do we have body, our officers are equipped with body cams, but all of our patrol vehicles and motorcycles have in-car cameras. So they have front cameras and they have rear cameras for a total of forty-eight cameras in our, in our patrol and motor vehicles. And we have four units in reserve. In case one goes down, we can go in, we don't have to wait, and we're constantly recording. So the officers have body cameras and the vehicles are equipped with cameras. So we, we have a pretty good photo video footprint, which we're very proud of. Now, also, one thing that we did embark on is, is we really wanted to bring our department, our city, into the twenty-first century. And we looked, the command staff here at the P D, and the one thing that, that we needed to improve on was that video footprint in our community. So we did that by reaching out and getting a, a grant from our CCP, Community Correction Partnership. And we were able to get four hard-mounted LPR systems. Those are license plate readers. And there, there's four of them hard-mounted throughout the city. I'm not going to give out the locations of those because we want to keep those confidential. They gather license plate information of vehicles when they pass the area. We also have two mobile LPR units. So we have two patrol cars that are fully functional that roam around the city with these mobile LPR data collectors. Now, we share, we're, we're in this, so Clovis P D, other entities throughout the state and across the nation have LPR systems. And we are able to access their databases. They're able to access our databases. They have paid huge dividends. We've, we've solved homicides through the LPR system. We have assisted San Jose P D in a statewide robbery ring. And we've also solved some hit and runs. And I can't tell you the number of stolen vehicles that we've recovered in our city from the LPR system. Now, the one thing we will not do is share the LPR system with ICE. We will not do that. We have signed agreements and we've informed the federal government that we will not share our information. And anyone that utilizes our databases through the LPR system has to do the same agreement. So we feel very strongly about that. Now, the other things that I can, that we're very, very pleased about, which could not have occurred if it wasn't for Mark in the I T department, Lieutenant Dan over there at Public Works and his outstanding employee Cole. We have been able to move forward with the citywide surveillance project. Basically, what that is, is we've implemented five hard-mounted cameras throughout the city. Now, those cameras do not collect the license plate information or awareness of a stolen vehicle. Those are just to view and to capture evidence such as traffic accidents. Or if we have a robbery in an area, we can go through the system. We can look at suspects. We can find suspects, but we don't gather intelligent information, store it in a bank. And it is paid, as soon as we got it up and running at Gateway and Fourth, we had a traffic accident, a hit and run. The city manager said, hey, we just installed those cameras. Let's look at them. And we looked at them and got the information and actually were able, through investigative purposes and the camera, to track down the hit and run driver and make an arrest. So like I said, those are five hard-mounted cameras throughout the city. We have them at Gateway and Fourth, Gateway in Cleveland, we have them at Cleveland in the Fairgrounds, Schnorr and Industrial, Cleveland and Lake. Also, we were approached by Caltrans and the C H P. Caltrans is wanting to give permission to C H P and in collaboration with us, and then we'll go through CCP again to acquire some of our LPR cameras and put them on Caltrans property so we can go down one forty-five with some of those or other places that are state-controlled. So not to give away where they may go. So that was very, very promising. And so that is the situation of our camera or video equipment here in the city. Any question with that? Before I move on.
I don't see any hands raised.
We do plan in the future to obtain through our JAG grant, which is secured by Yvette and her people in Grants Force to increase our hard-mounted surveillance project. Our, our whole goal is to eventually get cameras throughout the city. So.
Good job.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to arrest totals over a three-year period. So we're gonna cover years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and then we'll cover the first six months of twenty twenty-one. So kind of what's important here is the P D runs a four-beat system. So we dissect the city into four beats. The beats are divided by Gateway, East and West, and then North and South by Yosemite Howard Road. Excuse me. So B one is east of Gateway and south of the Fresno River. And then it runs to Avenue Twelve and east to Road Twenty-Eight. And we also gather a little bit of Twenty-Nine encompassing Caesar Chavez School. Beat two runs east of Gateway, north of the Fresno River to Avenue Seventeen and east to twenty, Road Twenty-Eight. And we consider B one and B two are predominantly the east side of the city. As we go and, and cross Gateway, we go into the west side of the city, which would be B three. And B three is west of Gateway, north of Yosemite or Howard Road, north to Avenue Seventeen, and then west to Road Twenty-Three, and we also pick up some of Road Twenty-Four in B three. Beat four is west of Gateway, south of Yosemite Howard Road to Avenue Twelve and a Half, and then west through Road Twenty-Four, and we also include Parkwood through the tax sharing agreement, which is on B four. Okay. So now we broke down the beat assignment for you. So in twenty nineteen, Beats one and two, we had a total of Beats One and Two, we had a total of 2,164 arrests, which equate to about 50.10% of all arrests made in the city for that year. On Beats Three and Four, we had a total of 2,155 arrests, which equates to 49.90%. So I know you guys are like, hey, what are the percentages of percentage? So if you break it down into raw bodies, if you will, in 2019, basically, we had nine more arrests on Beat One and Two than we did on Beat Three and Four. So nine individuals we arrested on Beats One and Two. So in 2020, we had on Beats One and Two, 1,516 arrests, which is 49.05%. On Beats Three and Four, we had 1,575 arrests for 50.95% total arrests. So in numbers, we had fifty-nine more arrests on Beat Three and Four than we did on Beat One and Two. So if you see, we're averaging really close to 50% arrests, equal arrests, on both Beat One and Two compared to Three and Four. Very few number difference. Now, so we ran the totals, and keep in mind, this is just for the first six months of this year, and they'll fluctuate. When you have six months, it could be, you know, we could have anomalies and numbers can change. But at the current rate, on Beat One and Two, we've made 915 arrests for 51.96%. And then on Beats Three and Four, we had 846 arrests for 48.4%. So basically, that's sixty-nine more arrests on Beat One and Two than Beat Three and Four for the first six months of this year. So once again, that's tracking to, again, become within a 50-50 split in arrests, which we're pretty happy with. It's not that one side is oversaturated and more arrests are made on one side versus the other. We're an equal opportunity PD as the numbers show, and we arrest equally on all beats. So with that, if there's any questions, I would be very happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Well, I don't see, Mr. Montes.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Chief. So it looks like there's definitely a dip in 2020, and that can, like you said, it can be attributed to the condition of the world. But does it look like right now we're on track to stay under the 2019 numbers as well, right? Because you're at six months, by eighteen would be the high number, and sixteen for Beats One and Two and Beats Three and Four?
Yeah, and you hit the nail on the head. In 2020, the COVID hit. And numbers dropped a little bit from 2019. We're seeing a slight uptick, but I agree with you. I don't see that we're going to be able to get to the 2019 numbers. And I keep my fingers crossed that we don't, because that's a good thing. That means we're doing something good. So, yes.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Councilwoman Gaeegos.
Chief, I would like you just to express to your staff on how we appreciate their hard work, especially during COVID. They were the boots on the ground, working out there, risking their health and their family's health by protecting the residents here in the city of Madera. So we appreciate part of that, the statistics that you're giving us are because our community realizes that we're not going to mess around. You have driven your staff to the point where our residents know that we're not going to put up with a lot of stuff that's happening out there and that we will follow through and we're coming. No call is too small, like Councilman Oliver used to say, and they still believe that. And we are out there for the littlest to the most important things that we have to take care to make sure that everybody puts their head on that pillow and knows that things are taken care of. And because of Measure K, we have now the staffing and the coverage that we need to show the community that we're there and we're in full force in numbers. And when you lifted and had everybody come back, we were hearing all the community out there, oh my gosh, there's an officer here and there. And they know now that we don't have any resolutions about going out and talking to residents, being out there staff, stopping and inquiring about things that are out there. So again, thank them from all of us for doing what they do and being out there and protecting every single resident in the city of Madera.
I certainly will, and they appreciate that more than you know. They appreciate the council and the support because without you and the citizens and the city manager and everybody, we couldn't do what we do. And it's a huge team effort with everybody on here, and thank you very much also, and the mayor.
Councilwoman Evans.
Hi, Chief.
Hi.
Hi. To you and all of your officers, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for their hard work. Thank you for them just beating the pavements. And I know it's not an easy job, but I commend each and every one of you. So from me, as well as I'm sure the rest of the council, just like Councilwoman Gaeegos said, you guys are valuable. Just thank you.
Well, thank you. And the community means a lot to us. And I will throw in an extra little tidbit here. From 2019, 2020, and even for the first six months of this year, our crime rate overall is still going down. We're going to come in, this six-month period, we're still about a minus 3% in violent crime from the prior year of 2020. So that's a very, very good sign that across the nation, you know, violent crime everywhere is spiking, and crime is spiking. It's not happening here. The one nuance that is coming is January the first of this year, the federal government, the FBI changed their crime stats and what they capture. It's now called NiBRS, which is going to, it's going to create a new base going forward. So this will be the first year of that, so we'll have a base. But we went through and extrapolated information based on the old way we used to collect the data, and we're still 3% under. So very positive. Your police department is in code enforcement. This entire entity here is doing a great job, and it's thanks to the likes of everybody right here in this leadership of the council and, of course, our city manager, and he didn't pay me to say that, so.
You owe him one. So I've got a question. The body cameras versus the vehicle cameras, do the vehicle cameras stay on all the time? And do the body cameras stay on all the time?
Okay, so see, now you're going to make me give away our secrets, so.
Well, no, if you want to answer that, we can talk in private.
No, 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 it's fine. So no, they do not, they do not functionally see and all the same. So in the vehicles, the cameras will activate when the lights go on in the vehicle. The body cameras, the officer has to activate them, okay? However, the camera systems that we purchased, both in the vehicle and the body-worn cameras, we carry what they call black footage, so they're constantly rolling 24/7. We, as command staff, can go in with our IT and activate it. So even though the camera wasn't manually activated, it still captures that, and we can go in and get it. Now, that footage, though, has a limited life shell. So we have to go, and so say we have an incident, we have a very limited time that we have to go and capture that if it's not turned on. So the answer to your question is yes and no.
Thank you.
We capture it all the time.
Thank you. So the idea for this report was generated from the public. The public is always asking the council questions regarding their community, and this is one of the ones that I was asked. And I believe in transparency, and this actually works for us. This is a great report from your department to alleviate some of the questions that people have. Not everybody in our community thinks the same, but if we can provide as much transparency in our works, whether it's public works or our finance department, fire department with CAL FIRE, that's always a good thing. More transparency is always a good thing. And so I will make a point of sharing this information with folks who have called me over a period of time and make sure that they get an understanding of where the city of Madera's police department is at. And I think this just goes to show that the council has supported to make sure that we have the cameras and we financed getting these new equipments, these new equipment as they come onboard to make sure that we're fully compliant and fully transparent in our community. I believe Councilwoman Gaeegos has one more item.
I do. I just wanted to put it out there, but before COVID, we did have the chief and his commander and lieutenants speaking at service clubs, letting our community members know these statistics that he's giving us. So for years, they have been out there sharing that information so that it can be filtered through. Person by person is the best advertising that we can get of the great things that are done here in our city with our police department. So I commend our staff on doing that, going out to the community and giving them that information also. Thank you.
I don't see any more hands raised. This is an informational report. Do we need a motion on this? I don't believe so. Right? This is just informational. Do we have any public comment on this item, Alicia?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right, then. I believe we can move on to item E2. Item E2, City Council to provide direction on how city council meetings will be conducted going forward. This discussion will be led by Arnoldo Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And just my luck, there's a train passing by, so I'll stick around. The item before you this evening is for a council discussion and direction on how council meetings are held for the next couple of months. And the reason I say the next couple of months is, council may recall, back in March of 2020, when the pandemic, or at the onset of the pandemic, Governor Newsom issued a series of governor's orders pertaining to COVID-19. At the time, it was not very well-known how transmission occurred. And council may recall that schools closed abruptly. We closed our doors to Singapore and a lot of our programmed activities. And specifically to the Brown Act, which is what governs how public meetings are conducted, the governor issued a governor's order in 29-20 on March 17th of 2020. Those governor's orders relaxed some of the Brown Act stipulations, specifically in terms of how they're held. One of those was that the local agencies could conduct public meetings via Zoom. They didn't spell out Zoom, they spelled out telecommunication. However, the predominant choice of, I think, most local agencies, because of its convenience, has been Zoom. The city of Madera has been operating via Zoom since the beginning of the pandemic. And we were on the cutting edge, as councils are aware. At times, technology can be a little clunky. There are times when it freezes. I've had the fortune of having a freeze on me in somewhat odd moments, or we haven't been able to share our screen. But however collectively, I think for the past year and a half, we've done a tremendous job of conducting the city's business and at the same time inviting the community. With that being said, the governor's orders are set to sunset on September the 29th. There are local agencies around us that have resumed in-person meetings, and I thought that it would be most appropriate to bring the item for council discussion. The one thing that I'll preface this with is when the pandemic started, the chief and I were talking, Chief Lawson, I'm not too sure if Chief Lawson recalls this conversation, and we're talking about closing City Hall and going to Zoom. And at the time, it was a very important moment for the community because not all public agencies were closed. And one thing that I indicated to him, and I believe it now more than ever, the decision to shut services and city facilities from the public, that was the easy decision. The most difficult decision was going to be, how do we open back up and how do we resume going into a pandemic? That if you would have told any of us this was going to be going on for 15 years, I think most of us would have thought, this is not going to happen in America. But yeah, here we are, 15, 16 months later, and we're still in the pandemic. And so we opened up City Hall a little over two weeks ago. Actually, two weeks and two days ago, we opened City Hall. We are still allowing a lot of our employees to telework. We do not have all programs operational still. For example, the senior center is still closed. We do have limited youth sports. Well, I wouldn't say limited youth sports. We have youth sports, but we're attempting to be very careful with how they operate. And our wall center is going to be opening up next week. However, we have had some programs in there. However, those programs were a little limited because of COVID restrictions still because they are youth. So with that, again, I thought it would be appropriate for council to provide some staff feedback in terms of the direction. Unless the governor's order, which we all know, Governor Newsom could potentially issue a new executive order that lifts the relaxation in 2920. However, he could prolong it, but right now it is set to sunset on September the 29th. And so with that, again, I'm standing up for council discussion and direction your council would like to provide then. And I see that Hilda has her hand, so she'd probably like to correct something that I said.
Hilda.
Thank you. Not to correct, just to amplify a little bit, just for clarification. The Brown Act aspect of all this relates to the physical attendance of the members of the council. The Brown Act does not apply to members of the public. So on September 30th, the executive order saying that council members may attend by video conference, that will end, and so members of the council will have to attend physically. However, many cities are already doing that, and many cities are allowing the public to choose to attend physically or to choose to attend by video conference or by phone. I just wanted to clarify that.
So let me just make sure I understand you. The governor's order is due to sunset on the 29th of September. And that would have us continue to meet in public?
That means that in your first meeting in October, the members of the council would need to be present at City Hall for their meetings.
Okay.
Members of the public, if you wish, can continue to attend by Zoom.
Excuse me?
Members of the public may continue to attend by Zoom.
Is that something that we can decide as a council? Or it would be up to the public to decide to either?
It is up to the council to decide. As far as, yeah, it is up to the council to decide. You may decide that it's too much trouble to having Zoom and physical meetings, and so you may stop that. But a number of cities are actually doing it, especially one of the things I thought of was when you do your redistricting, as you recall, there's a lot of outreach that's required. And that would be one way to show that the city encouraged public participation.
Okay. So I don't see any hands raised, so I guess I'll go first. I admit the opinion that we wait until the governor's order says that we need to come back and meet in chambers, and we continue to meet in Zoom. It is a fluctuating concept because numbers are changing all the time regarding COVID right now. They just went back to mandating masks at the Capitol because they had a COVID outbreak amongst staff. So now they're testing folks and requiring them to wear masks. So rather than put a hard deadline on the 29th, I would prefer not to put a deadline, not to start city council meetings by the city council until either the first of October or when the executive order expires. That is my opinion. Councilwoman Gaeegos.
Thank you, Mayor. I just. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to do some background first, that council meetings are. Are there for the people, for us to do business for our constituents and our city residents to see. Us doing this on Zoom, I know residents, especially in District four, five and six, don't have access to computers. Or if they do, they don't know how to. Filter through on how to get to Zoom through council, through a phone call, through the computer, and it's very difficult for them. We're not allowing them to come and be part of this meeting to voice their opinion. Other boards in the city have been meeting since day one. They have not been on Zoom. The supervisors, the boards of trustees from Madera Unify. We are all being seen at other events throughout the city, in person with people. Again, there is, this is not a big council. There are seven of us. We are all vaccinated and safe. We are getting paid for meetings, for city council meetings, and that is showing up to work. We had accommodations because of COVID, but now that has been lifted as of June. And I would really, really try to encourage and have my colleagues have the courage. To say, we need to show up in person for a council meeting. We're asking our officers, even during COVID, to go to work. We asked our public worker personnel to go to work, our parks service employees to go to work. Wastewater Treatment Plan, and I can keep going on. Our City Hall has been open for two weeks. We've asked our employees to show up to work. As a governing body of this agency as council board. I really encourage us to go back in person to the next council meeting. That would show precedence and leadership and strength through our body here as a council, especially in the city of Madera. We have set a lot of residents in this council. We made a lot of movement in this council. And I would like us to go forward. We have residents that are passionate and would like to have their say. It's hard to do that on Zoom when they're not being seen by all of us. They can only see the one person that's talking, or if they're on the phone, they can't see anybody at all. I think it's a disadvantage and disservice to our community that we are still on Zoom and we are not in person. So I really encourage us next meeting to be in person. And to give our city residents what they deserve, and that's doing business for the people. We're servants of the people as elected officials and to be in person at that next meeting. And that's how I truly feel.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Montes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I'm I'm going to agree with Councilwoman Gallegos. And for me, it boils down to a couple items, just the access. So I've seen a lot of people struggle with Zoom, not only here in council. But at work, people who use computers all the time. So I can only imagine, you know, we're we're telling people, hey, unmute yourself, unmute yourself. So it makes it a little, it's a barrier for people to come and participate. And, you know, we want to, I think that we could even have the public still participate if they so choose. Via Zoom, but I think the council should should be there. To Councilwoman Gallegos' point, we are asking a lot of our employees, especially police, fire, you have to show up. I've been showing up at work, you know, I I do have a little bit of leeway in my work. But I do have to show up and actually be there to do my job. I think it's, again, it just comes down to that access and having people, giving them the choice. But we can be safe. We're, I think, for the most part, we're all vaccinated. And we can take precaution to make sure that everybody's safe and we're conducting business. And open in a transparent manner. And I think that's what the community would like us to do. We've had people show up at City Hall wanting to speak. Only for us to tell them like, oh, yeah, no, you can't actually come and make any comment. You have to call or you have to log on. So for for those reasons, the access, the public access to us and to the process, the governing process. And then we're asking our employees to to show up and be here. I think we should, you know, to Councilwoman Gallegos' point, lead by example. So I would be in favor of opening up as soon as as possible. Obviously, in a safe manner, but that would be that would be my preference.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Santos. I will tell you that I am going to miss wearing my shorts for a council meeting. I think I think we all will. But to both Councilmember Montes' point and Councilwoman Gallegos', I think the transparency certainly is something huge. You know, getting acclimated to come back to council, I think it's going to be, you know, a challenge for some of us. But I think that if we put the precautions and measures so that we're not at risk, especially for some of us. With this whole new Delta variant that's coming across, I'm not sure if maybe we can get Sarah Boss back again and kind of speak to that. We don't know where that's going. Obviously, there's there's some some numbers that are increasing in certain areas. But I still, you know, I still think that we owe it to our constituency. To to show ourselves that we too, if we're asking our employers to come back and open up, we too. As employees of the of the constituents, we should come back and and join. Join in that and that opening. So I I'm in favor of it, but I do want to make sure that we are take precautions, especially for some members in the council. If if there there's some risk or something that we take preventive measures so that we're not. Having it put anyone at risk. And I'm not sure, I I saw, I I did see how the supervisors had their plexiglasses. I'm not sure if that's something that we can do. I'm not sure if that amounts to some cost to do that. But if that that makes a council members a lot more at ease, then then I would be in favor of that. But surely I am going to miss just being from here, from a Zoom standpoint. Because times are changing, and I think Zoom is going to be, it's not going to leave anytime soon. It's going to be part of future meetings. And maybe not so in the in the public agencies and what have you, but I think it's it's just part of. This this evolution of technology that's going to help us communicate in a better format. But, I mean, I I'm I'm ready to get back. I am. And I I think, you know. The people really want to see that. So I'm in favor of that, but I but I'm also in favor of making sure that. You know, we don't see no spikes because come September, something changes, then we're back to square one. So I'd like to get some type of report as well, but but I am in favor of moving forward with that. And if this is the next meeting, then I'm good with that.
Thank you. Anita?
Yes. Thank you. As far as returning. I need to see some reports first. The variant is out there. And I just received information from the hospital that they're not allowing. The volunteers to return because the thing is starting to spike again. And I just got that from liaison from the hospital. So right now, I need to see Sarah Boss come back and give us some information first, as far as this variant is concerned. And I thank everyone that has returned. And yes, I have been in different activities around town, but I'm still going to be cautious. And if we could get the plexiglass Jose, I'm with you, that would be a game changer for me. But right now, until something like that happens and Sarah Boss comes back and tells us, I'm going to chill at home. And if I have to put my little shield on and go back out into the public, I'll do so. As far as my constituents here in my area, when they have a problem, they have no problem. Reaching out to me, calling me, I get calls daily. So as far as the computer is concerned, if there's something that needs to be done on the computer. All they do is call me. I I run out there. I see what they have to do and see what they have to say. So that's where I'm at right now. I need a report before I can say, yes, I'm going to go back. Because I just got this report. So, thank you.
Do you have something to add, Councilwoman Gallegos?
Yes, I was at the county today, and you're real concerned about this variance. We had twelve positives in Madera County, and those are from one event of a hundred people that the twelve got spread. And this was back in May. It's not something that just happened overnight. I do have to say, in summer school, the last two weeks of summer school, we have lifted all the shields off the kids' desk. The kids are allowed to sit next to each other. They're allowed to play with each other. They're in a closed classroom. And it is like getting back to normal. You have to get back to normal. And that's why I asked my colleagues for the courage to say, we need to get back to normal, just like we're asking the rest of our community to do that. Even our school district has moved forward with that. Our supervisors are moving forward with that. I was at the county health department. They're moving forward with that. It seems like we're the only ones that haven't set the precedence that this is what needs to be done in the city to show that we're getting back to normal. We are moving forward. And this is important, especially for our District four, five and six. Those constituents, sure, they reach out to council members, they to reach out to the entire council because that's who makes the decision, not one. Six make the decision. And we need to hear it as a body of six. Our constituents tell me things all the time. And I say, you need to come to council. I'm a one of six. I can't make that decision. They need to hear this from you. And how can they do that if we're on Zoom? It's impossible to happen. And so people are sitting at home that we don't even know that have concerns because they haven't had that opportunity. That's why we were elected to do the right thing. The right thing is to do business like we're supposed to do business in person at City Hall. That's what we were elected to do, not hide behind a screen in Zoom. They granted, they they were forgiving. They knew this is something we need to do. And now we need to move forward and move on and be the leaders that we are because we're elected and to do the right thing. And have the courage to say, that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
Alrighty, I don't see any more hands raised. Artemion?
Yes, I I would like to say that it's better to follow the rules from the government. And wait a little longer and make sure they have, we have. The real good reason to open up sooner than September. We got to make sure real good that we can open up and everybody can be safe. And it's it's very important for me to follow the government's orders. That way, we can be more sure about what we're doing. And that's my comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gallegos?
Yes, Councilwoman Gallegos, I respect your position on that. The governor's orders were lifted. He is can extend it till the end of September. And he's leaving it up to the bodies, just like when we shut down. The governor gave a certain date, but he said it's up to the city, well, actually, the counties deciding when they want to shut down. What they're, the public order that was put in place by Dr. Paul. Even though he didn't, he gave an outline, every city shut down and did what they needed to do, what they felt was right for their city. It's 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 not following the rules. The rules are in place. He said, June fifteen, open up. And most of the cities around us have done that. He's giving a leeway this September if it needed, if that's what their council is choosing. That's why he's giving an open ended like he did when he shut everybody down. He didn't say, everybody has a shutdown on this day. That didn't happen. He gave a projected time and everybody shut down when they felt their city was ready to. So we are following the rules if we come in person at the next meeting.
Alright.
Doing the right thing.
Thank you very much. I don't see any more hands raised. Alicia, do we have any public comment on this issue?
No, Mayor, not at this time.
Thank you. I will ask for a motion from my colleagues.
I still move to approve that we're in person at the next council meeting by doing the right thing as elected officials.
Second up.
Second by Mr. Mont, motion to approve. Let me go up here. E two by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, would you call the roll?
Mayor, just for clarification, and that's just for the council. And will you address how members of the public can attend via Zoom or otherwise?
Councilwoman Gallegos, you want to clarify your motion?
I can amend that. We open it up to our citizens as we should and do our business for the people.
And no more Zoom or or authorized Zoom?
We can authorize temporary, we authorize a Zoom that if the public wishes to comment in Zoom, they have that opportunity. Thank you, Hilda.
Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Rodriguez had his hand up too.
I will hold on and after the motion, so, yes, Alicia.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
No.
Mayor Garcia?
No.
Motion fails. Three yes votes and three no votes. Councilmember Gallegos, Rodriguez and Montes voting yes. Councilmember Evans, Mayor Protem Viegas and Mayor Garcia voting no. Final vote, three, three.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, don't call me a sidekick, Mayor, but somehow I figured we were going to come to a budding edger. But, you know, I I certainly would would make a motion that. Will recommend staff to bring back Sarah Boss, maybe on our next meeting, give us some numbers. And hopefully, if that satisfies the council, then we can partake in the in the. Live meetings at City Hall on the first meeting of August. And that would be my my motion, again, allowing for Zoom from the public. And 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 also allowing them to to come live to the to the meeting. So that would be my motion. If if other council members would agree to that. Maybe adding some of the preventative measures such as the plexiglass, just to make other council members feel more comfortable. I'd like to also amend that motion. So not sure if all that was describing that, but that's my motion. So let me, let me, let me, let me rephrase this. So my motion is that we bring in Sarah Boss to following meeting in July. Have her bring some statistics and data so that council feels comfortable. And make the first meeting of August our live meeting, where the city council will be at at the at the chambers. Again, allowing the public to participate via Zoom and or in public. That makes sense?
So at the very next meeting, which is on the twenty first?
The next meeting for July, correct?
Yes.
So you want to bring, you want to make a motion to put that on the agenda?
Recommendation to bring Sarah Boss, have some numbers. And if the council therefore feels comfortable, then we can make August, the first meeting of August in the chambers. I think I said it clearly earlier.
Hilda, can you give me some help here?
I believe his motion is to request that Ms. Boss attend the next meeting with data and information for the city council to consider. And based on that information that council receives. That 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 there will be an open meeting.
Correct, on the first August.
If if the council votes that way, so it's it's not a given that that'll happen, right?
So that is my motion, yes.
So so, yes, that that's a good question for clarification. So at that meeting, what council would listen to her and then take another vote, not necessarily. Because your motion already says that the that for an open meeting. But at that meeting in in July, the next meeting, after hearing her report, the city council would say, we now have more information. And somebody, probably you, Mr. Rodriguez, would make a motion to have open meetings in August.
Correct, first meeting of August. And I think I had made that if council felt comfortable, then we can bring it in the first meeting of August. But yes, that is correct.
The the reason I'm confused, Tilda, is because typically. Items to be put on the agenda are requested during commissioners' reports at the end of the meeting. And not a new new motion. But if you're saying that it's alright to do this, then, you know, we can listen to the motion.
You're you're right. Generally, there is a specific place on the agenda for that. However, I think the way he worded it brings it into the purview of this. I mean, you're on it now, might as well vote for it now.
Get it over with without too much speechifying. Okay, so there's a motion. Mr. Rodriguez, you made a motion, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. I'll second, I'll second his motion.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Rodriguez to bring in Sarah Boss for an informational report uh, regarding COVID at our next meeting, second by Mr. Montes.
And, 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 and with the, uh, understanding that a vote would be taken after that, uh, discussion, uh, to return to an open meeting in August.
Thank you for clarifying that, uh, Hilda.
Collecting my thoughts. So, as far as I'm concerned, I think that we're, we're still pushing, pushing the idea for August 1st. And I think we have to wait until we digest the information and not necessarily open it up in the first meeting in August. But the motion's been made and seconded. I just want to say that I would be voting against it. Alicia, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Uh, abstaining.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Viegas?
No.
Mayor Garcia?
No.
We have Councilmember Gallegos abstaining from the vote. Councilmember Rodriguez and Montes voting yes. Councilmember Evans, Mayor Pro Tem Viegas and Mayor Garcia voting no.
Thank you very much. That closes off item E2.
We do have a, uh, council member with their hands up, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Gallegos?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I just have to say, after five years being on this council, I'm very disappointed. We did not, our police did not ask for more, um, information. When they went back to work, they didn't ask.
Councilwoman Gallegos?
Yes.
We've already discussed this issue.
Right, but I, I had my hand up. I didn't get recognized. So I think I deserve at least 30 seconds.
We're done with this issue, Councilwoman. It could be brought up at a later date, but it will not be continued now.
Mayor Garcia, that's unfair because, um, we made motions and you still allowed Councilman Rodriguez to say his comments.
After advice from Hilda, but I'll take your point. Go ahead and finish.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm done.
Thank you. Councilmember Montes?
Say that, I, I agree with Councilwoman Gallegos again. That's really not fair. You, I mean, we're, we're, we do have a discussion item. And we, that's what we're supposed to be doing here. Supposed to be discussing this and having, uh, just having that discussion. And we just cut people off and say, because you don't agree with somebody, that's.
No, 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 that's, that's not correct. What I'm saying is that we had a motion, it was voted on.
And two motions.
And if we were gonna have another motion, then we could have listened to another motion, but we didn't listen. We didn't hear another motion. I didn't hear another motion.
She had her hand up for discussion and then you disclosed it. So that, I was just gonna, I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay. Thank you much. Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, just, just to clarify that the item before us is deliberation and direction. So if we can't find direction in one motion, if you don't find it on the other motion, then we continue to deliberate. If not, then we move on. That's the basis of that E2, uh, there.
Correct. And, and you're correct. What I did not hear was a new motion.
Or there was deliberation or at least comments that were trying to be made. So anyhow, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will now go on to item F, Councilmember Reports, Announcements, Future Agenda Items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and, uh, public events. To request updates, to initiate future agenda items and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on the items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. Councilmember Viegos?
Yes, I would like to encourage my colleagues. Today I, um, attended the Lisa Project by Madera County. It is very insightful. So if you did all receive an email, if you can have time to attend that, it is about a 30 to 40 minute presentation. Um, being an elementary school teacher and going on ride alongs with our PD, uh, I have seen a lot of that. It wasn't shocking. It can be very emotional. So be prepared that it's, it's not an easy thing to, um, go through. But it's something I think everyone in the city that received the email and especially the council should try to attend that. It is available the next couple of days to, um, hit that event. It's very well done by the county. So I would like to have just heard that. Thank you.
You. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, I still would like to see if we can bring in, uh, Sarah Boss in a future, uh, uh, meeting. At least to give us some, some new data with this new variant. I know that, that some people are concerned. Uh, again, that, that previous motion, uh, was a two-part. This is more of a just, uh, asking our, our county health director to come back with some new data. I'm not sure if that, uh, could be, uh, okay with the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez. I think that it's been a long time coming. Uh, we haven't had Sarah back. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, uh, Ronaldo, could you ask her to, to come back and give us an update? It's been, uh, it's been about a month, right?
Absolutely. It's been, yeah, I believe about maybe five weeks, but you're absolutely correct, mayor.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to her.
Just to give us an update, that would be, that would be good. Um, Councilmember Montes?
Yeah, I would like to point out that you have a, an attendee that was, got their hand raised. It looked like they were wanting to make a comment. Um, they still have their hand raised now, but other than that, nothing to report.
Alicia, do you have a, an attendee?
Phone number is, uh, two, three, two.
Yes, mayor, there is someone on the line with their hand raised.
Hello caller. Did you have a comment? You might have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Yeah, I had a, a comment to make regarding the, having the meetings in person. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So I think that it's ridiculous that you guys are not holding the meetings in, in person when everybody else is. If there's people that are on the council that wish to stay home and sit behind their computer instead of being in front of their constituents at a meeting, they can do so, but I think that the people that are standing up and doing the right thing by wanting to go in person should be able to go in person and hold a meeting. Just me trying to get in contact right now to try to make a comment. I've been waiting for 15 minutes. So it's ridiculous. We should be able to go in person to comment and to talk to, to our city council members. And I don't think that you guys need Sarah Boss. That's a waste of our county and our city resource. If you guys have questions about any variants, you can look online on the CDC website yourself. I don't think that you need any additional clarification than what you can find online. That's a waste of Sarah's time that she could be using to do something else that's better for the county than explaining to you as a council, something that you can Google and look up on the CDC website. And that is the end of my comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will now enter into our closed session. Hilda, could you make the, um, oh, did we finish with everybody? Uh, no, we did not. Uh, Councilwoman Evans?
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Report?
I just wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman Gallegos and Dan Foss for the tour that I had today at the airport. And it was quite informing and I was, I truly enjoyed it. So thank you very much. Thank you staff for everything that you are doing for us and keeping us safe to the chief and also to, um, Chief Watson. So Fourth of July was crazy and the fireworks were everywhere. And I'm so sure you guys had a lot of work to do. But I truly thank you for keeping us safe and that's it.
Councilmember Viegas?
Uh, no comment on this.
Alrighty. Well, that concludes, um, our council member reports. We will now move on to our closed session. Hilda, would you please take us to the closed session announcement?
There are two items on closed session. One is conference with legal counsel and anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation, government code section 54956.9 D2 and its workers' compensation claim of Hector Gadibai. Number two, conference with labor negotiators, government code section 54957.6, agency designated representatives, Arnoldo Rodriguez, Wendy Silva and Che Johnson. And the employee organization, general bargaining unit slash Madera affiliated city employees association.
Thank you very much for that, Hilda. Um, I now call the adjournment to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council tonight. Our next regular meeting will be on July 21st, 2022, 2021. Thank you very much, staff, and have a good evening. Thank you very much, staff, and have a good evening.
Council met in closed session. All members were present. There is no reportable action.
Thank you very much for that. Now we go to the adjournment. This city council meeting is adjourned at 8:50 PM. And I want to thank everyone involved for your participation in tonight's meeting. I'm gonna go get my quesadilla now, so you guys do the same with yours, and we'll see you soon.
Bye.